It being 6:30, I'll bring this meeting of the Manchester Select Board to order. Roll call vote. Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy is here.
Yes.
John is here. The first item on the agenda is public comments on non-agenda items. And since I've never learned to use my computer here, I will ask Becky if there's anyone in the audience with a hand up. I didn't go on.
No, 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 no. No one raising their hand at the moment.
No one raising their hand.
Just pass this one.
And I recognize everyone who's here. If you have public comments. Okay. The chairman's report. I'll make my report in the liaison section. And then we talk about the action items which we have coming up. Today's action items are the committee appointment of policy, launch service, marketing discussion, and an update from the Affordable Housing Trust.
So that we don't have.
That we don't have.
So that will fit out for next time.
Okay. Is there anything that comes to anyone's mind that should be on that list that you don't see?
Are we discussing the tree? I have the list that we got emailed.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That's on the regular agenda.
Oh, okay.
This is on this two things that...
We're not going to put it in the list.
This is a checkbox to make sure that...
Keep to the future.
To reduce the number of things that we forget about from meeting to meeting. Okay. At that, the next item on the agenda is the tree at 47 School Street. Greg, how do you want to send it?
So, just a question before you, whether or not it's a public tree.
Uh huh.
The owners, I think, are here to represent their case that they feel that it is. And I think Tom Henderson is also here. He can speak to it. So...
Has Chuck looked at the tree?
Yes.
It is not 30 feet, 30 inches in diameter at just high. So it's not a heritage tree.
It's not a heritage tree. Correct. It's a large tree, but it's not a heritage tree. And certainly, the practice of the town has been for years now. I can speak to how long, maybe. But trees that are behind a wall have always been considered a non-public tree. Considered a private tree. So that's been the practice for years. And Tom can speak to that.
I think the practice is in our policy, tree policy.
Yes.
How about the grandfather where it was the town that put it in in 1970 before the wall was there?
Hmm, that's interesting. Please, let's have the...
So it was put in in 1970 by Bill Hatcher encountering William Hatcher in 1970. And it's grown enormously. And unfortunately, we've trimmed it. The limbs continuously fall on the sidewalk and in the street in huge proportion, which we feel are a hazard. Also, what's happened is because of the size of the tree, which is huge, it's creating a problem in that in the last few years, we've had to spend thousands of dollars because it's now interfering with the sewer system. And so they've even said, when we go and we have all the sewer work done, they said that eventually they're going to have to dig up the whole street on School Street to correct this problem because the tree is so huge that the roots are just getting entangled into the whole sewer system.
Within months.
And last year, we had to have the work done twice within three months where they have to go in and it backs up the whole system into the house because it cannot properly prune.
What kind of a tree is it? What is it? What kind of a non-public tree is it?
Yeah, it's a big, it's either a scarlet oak or pin oak in the red oak family. I know the tree well. They're subject to droppage like a lot of trees, branches. They are a very strong, healthy tree you have there. All I really can tell you, and you ladies, is I can just tell you the history of the tree. I can't tell you about... It was my understanding, this was concerning our tree policy. And there again, I wish somebody was here from the tree. I do know that the policy that they did, they took them two and a half years to come up with something. And they spent, and they did come up with this policy behind walls. Whether that applies here, that's nothing to do with me. I think, Anne, if I could just evaluate, that it's a healthy, live tree that's growing the way it should grow. And that's always a risk, invasion of sewer lines and things, whenever you plant trees along roadways.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to get from you that it is a healthy oak tree.
It's a healthy, live oak.
Why, I don't, if it's healthy, I don't understand. When we're talking about, we're not talking about little branches. We're talking about these huge, that go right into the sidewalk, they go into the street. If anybody were walking by, they probably would be killed. And every time it happens, I call the DPW. They have to come with a truck to collect all of these big, huge limbs, honestly.
Their limbs. And also, they hover over the wires. And my brother Charles spoke with the Friends of the Trees of Manchester. And they said, actually, trees that are certain proximity to the street are considered ownership...
Oh, they're tough.
Yeah, the ownership of the town.
Yeah, that's what we're considering, I guess.
It's just the street as well.
So the wall was built after?
The wall was built after. I mean, that wall was put in probably about 15 years ago.
Anne, if I could just procedurally, we're not getting names and addresses.
I'm sorry.
Debbie would need those.
Yep.
My name is Johanna Nahadas-Kedra. And so the address is 47 School Street. And Christine Nahadas-Bell, she's 49.
Did you get that, Debbie? And John Henderson is well known. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Just dove into this without thinking.
No, but I have to say, I mean, I'm just really, I mean, when we had Halloween this year, it was, I was concerned, I mean, anytime there's wind, I mean, I'm concerned with people walking by. And I've noticed even when it was windy, where women who had baby carriages, they cross the street. They cross over because they'll see limbs, huge limbs fall. We called, one day we called, what was it? We called the work and they weren't even afraid to go because it was so close to wires. And they were afraid to even... Well, we called the police, actually, because there's a huge one hanging on a wire. And they were afraid, they said, you never touch, you don't even touch anything on a wire. So they didn't want to touch it. Then what happened was there were some workers from Comcast, from the, I think it was Comcast, that they said that the branches were interfering with everybody's, their instrument or whatever, okay, Google. And he said, I'm going to knock this down because he said, I think that'll be a, he knocked it, he somehow knocked it down, took it off the wire. But it is, it's just, I think it's a true, aside from the expense of the sewer, it's truly an accident waiting to happen, whether it be a car driving by and having a big branch fall in the car, or having a...
Okay, I think we understand that you think it's a danger. The question here really is, is it your tree that you can take down? Or is it a tree that the town needs to be responsible for?
Well, we didn't plant it. We didn't plant it. And the thing is, my dad, my, well, my dad kept records of everything. And Charles said that, yeah, he did have the record of everything. Who stated that, but unfortunately, I don't know who that is.
I can't really remember. I may have been away overseas at that time in the military, but I know Bill Hatcher did plant a lot of trees on, you know, we had a policy that, at the time, in the 70s, early 70s, we had a town policy that the owner, we gave them a piece of paper which allowed them to reserve the right to remove the tree at their expense if it ever became an encumbrance to their property or they felt it was a hazard to their property. So that was, I'm sure, the policy in the 70s. As you know, I've been working on trees for the town of Manchester for over 60 years. I remember most everything. But as far as trees losing branches and being a hazard, we have that throughout, everywhere. And that's why the shade tree laws in Massachusetts are governed under what they call acts of God. We cannot remove every dead piece or watch every tree in town. There's a very limited budget. If we are informed that there's a bad safety issue, we get right on it, on our trees. But private trees, that's another issue. That's up to you to determine.
Yeah, but that's weird.
Whose tree it is.
I agree.
Under the current policy that they spent this long, somebody was here from the committee, actually, to explain.
I think we have all read and understand the policy. And I think we understand that you, the extent that you see it's a danger. The piece of information I would like to have is whether Chuck actually thinks that this tree is going to cause the town a lot of expense in sewer repairs.
Oh, yeah, I did talk to him about that. But I certainly can follow up.
And whether or not that's significant, we still, we're still discussing.
So he did, we did talk about the tree, and he didn't mention that on his concern.
Okay, so it's not high on his list?
Correct.
Yes, I've just said, is this the sewer line, the town sewer line, as opposed to the house sewer line?
And I don't know.
When you say you've had problems with the sewer, that's your sewer line coming from the main sewer?
It goes out to the street.
The line that comes from the street to your house? Because the tree would probably be in that line of, that pathway. Yeah. And have the, you've had problems with that, I guess, with regard to your sewer line. What does the plumber says? The plumber said, you should get rid of this tree, or?
They said it's all because of this tree.
Okay.
They said the, I mean, they, they said that the roots, as the, as the tree's growing, the roots have grown into this sewer line and it's causing a real problem. And they showed, they said, they're going to have to, they said, eventually what's going to have to happen is on School Street, in the middle of the street, that's going to all have to be dug out.
Well, this is in Chuck's purview. That's why I'm kind of asking whether...
Becky, I mean, we've, we've talked about situations like this before and that there are means of mitigating those problems in terms of sewer lines, as you discussed in the past, and being able to remove some of the roots. It is a magnificent tree. And I think that if we were to say, every tree that's a hazard, let's take them down, we'd have all trees gone. And I think, I'm sorry, what were you going to say?
If I may, it's just, the question, if the tree, if we decide...
Is it ours or not?
...is not ours, then the owners are free to take it down.
Yep.
If we decide that the tree is ours, then it goes through the, would have to go through the procedure that we follow for removing town trees.
Mm-hmm.
But the question isn't, I think, so much the degree to which the tree is a problem, but who owns it?
Who owns it? Do we, do we, we don't have an actual circumference on that tree, but we know it's not heritage. Is that correct?
No, I don't have the exact dimensions on it.
It's a mass tree. I would excuse me, I would like to know, I'd like to know what the circumference is. Sorry, typically, when we discuss, we discuss and then you ask to be heard. The board usually discusses and then we'll come back. But Anne is chair, so she does it.
No, I think, at this point, I'd like to have the board either discuss or ask you direct questions.
Yeah. Do you know what the, I'd like to know what the circumference is.
I'd like to revisit Tom's comment about the disclaimer that was given to owners about the trees that were planted by the town, or basically...
Or the Friends of Trees.
The Friends of Trees. There was a, that issued to every, every tree that was planted?
That was prior to the formation of Friends of the Trees.
But I would think that that, I don't know if that...
Yeah, every owner, I mean, I worked extensively with Steve Grimes and Bill Hatcher for a private company. And every owner was given that thing just to make sure, as I explained, if it grew so huge and became an encumbrance, they reserved the right at their expense to remove the tree. Yeah, in my, in my manual tree warden, I, tree wardens manually explain, I probably have 10 cases where towns have tried to sue owners for removing what's on their property. You reserve that right, you own the vertical distance over their property. The ladies have, I would assume, should they want to pursue it that far, the courts would side in them because that's where the precedent exists, the right of property and the right of to-do. That's why, at that time, we gave that thing to encourage more planting because we tried to get away from planting sidewalk trees. They do much better, as is shown by your trees. Those are relatively young trees, but they grow very, very rapidly when they're in a beautiful, a situation like that.
What year was that?
Wait. Oh, oh, oh.
Prior to, prior to the formation of Friends of Trees, which I would say was 1971, '72. So you're right on if you say 1971. Your dad probably had kept that somewhere and, you know, those things have a tendency to, that little piece of paper.
Thank you.
Brian?
No, I just want to, I'm just curious, is to, procedurally, does that, that piece of paper still hold some value? Okay. And if it does, then the determination, who decides that it's an encumbrance?
Yeah.
Okay. That's a very broad term. But everything seems to be, as much as I think it's a beautiful tree, so, okay, I think it makes the house look great, that's my opinion. But this decision may have already been made for us, if we can just determine if that, if that piece of paper is still valid and if it, quote unquote, fits encumbrance.
We have a couple of questions here that we're, we tend to mix up.
And then who pays for the different tree?
Right. One is, is it a town tree or is it a private tree? If it's a private tree, they're free to take it down.
Right.
If it's a town tree, then it will have to go in front of a tree hearing. And...
So I'm kind of aligned with Brian here. This piece of paper that our tree warden referenced, it would seem to indicate that although the tree was planted, you know, within 11 feet of the street, they were giving the ownership rights to the property owner.
Exactly.
Right? So if, in my mind, regardless of today's policy, at that time, they were given the ownership. And I don't have evidence of anything that has changed that.
Because that would be grandfathered.
And to that point, then, they can take it down at their expense. At their expense. Is that fair?
That's mine.
So my question, then, I guess, to you would be, if the town takes it over, is it your expectation that the tree would probably come down? Because you've had concerns, not only with your plumbing, but also because of things that have fallen on the sidewalk?
If the, if you take ownership of it, I'm getting the feeling, okay, everybody loves the tree. It's a town took ownership of the tree. Is there any way that, being that they have taken ownership of the tree, that, I know that you mentioned something about this, a way of controlling the roots in some way of, that it doesn't get to a point where it's going to destroy the, you know, where it's not going to create such a problem that it's going to destroy, you know, this sewer system, where they're going to have to do that major construction on School Street. And the limbs that are hanging, it will be pruned so that it will continue to look beautiful, like you all say, it's a beautiful tree, it is a beautiful tree. So as owner, as a town owner, as you take ownership of that tree, would you be assured that you would prune it and then prune the roots too?
And if somebody was hurt, was hurt by that tree?
Tom has referenced...
Who has the liability?
The liability, there's a special liability for tree trees.
Right.
I think that's our concern. That is my concern.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, we all agree it's a lovely tree. I think the issue is here, whose tree is it? According to our current policy, the ladies own the tree. It's their tree, it's on their property. It's not within the, if we're going to follow that policy, I see a lot of complications coming along the line if we make a precedent here and we take, that doesn't conform to our current policy. I don't see any, I mean, it is, it's a lovely tree. I think the small expense of pruning it periodically to keep it relatively safe, nothing is supers, we have, you know, I do remember one large, big piece tore out of the adjacent tree, which is a town tree, right? Because it's, there's no, you know, and I do believe, did the town clean that up?
No, my father paid when this...
The big piece tore out.
That's when the lightning struck it.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
We actually paid my father.
Okay, now we're, we're having a, okay, so...
But can you...
Please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, back to the ownership issue?
Right.
What I've heard, correct me if I'm wrong, but the initial issuance of that piece of paper and the current policy, both would indicate that it is a private tree, unless I'm missing something.
That's what I'm hearing.
I haven't seen anything presented that would indicate it's a town tree. Am I missing something?
I've got, I've just got, one, independent of the legal issue, right now, you have the power to do whatever you wish with that tree.
Yeah, okay.
If that, if that becomes ownership here and there are legal issues associated with that, the process we go through as to what's to be done with that tree is, you know, up in the air. There are a lot of people that are very strong champions of trees in this town, and the chance that that comes down, I don't know what it is, but it's not necessarily high. And if you continue to have plumbing problems, that's no longer something that you have control over.
So...
So, all right, fine. Don't trip your lawn. In terms of the plumbing problem, there are ways to, to obviously root a root or out the roots. Sometimes you can put a liner in it to prevent new roots from coming in, or it's something you do every 10 years. But anyways, that's quick commentary on the sewer issue.
I think I would like to have a vote of the board on whether affirming that that is a private tree.
If I may, I think she has one more comment.
Yeah, I have one more question. Because I know that you said in 1972 that those papers went out. And I know that the tree was planted in 1970. So I would like to just show proof that this tree that we know that was given to our family fell under the time that those papers were given to the people stating that by giving that tree, it was then their responsibility that if anything happened. Because you made a statement that it, in 1972 and '73, people were given a piece of paper to sign stating that they took full ownership of the tree. The tree didn't go up in '72 and '73. It went up when my brother went to Vietnam in 1970. And that's when the tree went up, 1970. So that's a timeframe, it's a different timeframe, so...
I think you've made that clear. And your question is to Tom. Tom, when were those certificates handed out? What timeframe?
I would say all through the 60s, maybe up to as late as 1970, the early 70s. I can't, I mean, I didn't save them, I wasn't tree warden at the time, but I think Walter Lemay, the town may have those. It doesn't make you responsibility, it gives, it reserves the right for you to do whatever you want with the tree. When we planted a tree on private property, that was the form. We dispense with it, I don't know why, but maybe liability issues, I don't know. But the tree, the way I understand the policy today, the tree, under the new policy, after it was planted, gives you, that's, gives the tree to you. The tree becomes your responsibility. You own the tree. I can't make it any clearer than that, on today.
We do have a hand up from Marlene.
Am I right, Theo?
Yeah.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, there's...
Marlene Dolan has her hand up.
Marlene Dolan, okay. Marlene, go ahead, unmute yourself.
She's nude, yes.
Marlene? Okay.
Sorry about that, guys. I'm sorry about, I don't know why I'm on twice. Let me lower my hand. So I am on the Friends of the Manchester...
Would you, I'd rather give, we've had your name two or three times, but name and address, please.
Thank you, Marlene Dolan, 19 Woodcrest Road, Manchester, Mass.
Okay, go ahead.
Marvelous. Well, first of all, I want to say that these two people coming in here, who I've known for years, wouldn't be coming in unless they did feel there was a problem because they love this town more than we love, I mean, they love this town like they love everything. Would you, anybody who follows them on Facebook would know. Second, I feel that our tree policy is very confusing. And there shouldn't be branches falling down to the extent they are. And we've got a pruning issue in the town altogether. I can't respond to the roots problem with the plumbing, but I mean, I trust their word on that. Having said that, you want to make them walk away from this meeting feeling good about their decision if they take it down. And/or if the town wants to take over pruning it on a preemptive basis, because I do think they worry about people walking by and the kids coming for Halloween, then I think the town needs to end the Manchester trees. We should get together and come up with a better pruning schedule. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is this something we need to take into consideration at another meeting, or are we ready to make a decision?
I'm ready. I'm ready.
Is there a motion?
Yes, there is. I move that the select board affirm that the tree located at 47 School Street is a private tree.
Second, for the discussion? Becky? Yes. Lauren?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Answers yes?
Yes.
So you're free to do what you want with the tree. Had it been decided that it was a town tree, you would be subject to hearings and, as John suggested, not all, a number of trees that people have asked to have taken down have been turned down. Request to take the trees down, there's the turn. So this gives you more freedom to do what you want.
Yeah, I can give a quick update. I've been working with Peter Twining from the Finance Committee to help our Harvard master produce a business plan for the whole Harvard launch. We're meeting, we've met with Greg a couple of times, we're meeting again together tomorrow with the buy-on to go over some of the numbers. I would say the one thing I do want to... I would say the one thing I do want to bring up to the board regarding that is we are focused just on the launch service. And all of the financials that you will see are just to get the launch service up and running, not including Harvard tours, any other ancillary services, because we feel it's important just to walk before we run. So that's the main thing I just wanted to mention today. We should have the numbers. I think, Greg, our hope is to complete the numbers, you know, this week and get it in front of FinCom first and then the Select Board.
Yes.
Just a question. Do they... Does... Did Tom keep very, very many records of the operation? Like, I'm looking at the number of trips each day, the number of trips per subscriber.
Our next step after Buy On is to meet with Tom, but we've also been getting... So the numbers that we're using right now before we meet with Tom are other launch services from some of the clubs. So we're trying to get a benchmark, if you will, what are some of the costs that we might not have previously considered, et cetera. So we are going to meet with Tom to get confirmation on those numbers, but we're also going out to the other launch services, getting as much data as we can.
Has anyone considered insurance?
That was mentioned. Greg, you had that.
I don't have a number to give you, but I know we have asked our carrier to give us a quote and see what sort of additional cost that would cost.
Just a question, and I don't know if you have the answer. Other municipalities, Gloucester, Beverly, do they have municipal launch services or are they private launch services?
Gloucester does.
Marblehead?
I believe that one does. Marblehead does.
So there was a model of it?
Well, a lot of communities do, yes. Yeah, Buy On ran the one.
That was not a public launch service.
Oh, no, that was private.
That was from a marina to service the wharrens that they... Sticks in my mind because they closed one day when I was on sailing.
Service expectations.
Yes, that's a critical part.
You made it back. You made it short.
Exactly.
Okay, that's... Thank you. Is there further questions on the launch service? Now we're ready to start the partnering discussion.
So we have a number of topics here. In order that they are on the agenda.
Starting with enforcement.
Starting with enforcement discussions and then moving into options for enforcement, whether they be meters or piask or some other version. We do have a gentleman online with us who offers a product called a safety stick. Ken Wallens is his name. He's... When you're ready, he can give you a little overview of that product and answer questions you might have. So it might be good to start off with the chief? And we'll have you talk a little bit about challenges with enforcement.
Well, the challenges right off the top, the challenges with enforcement, I've had enough people to do, especially in the summertime. We've sent out the job posting a couple of times so far. I was in the crickets. It's been online. I sent it to the local colleges, and we haven't received any feedback from it at all.
What are you talking about, Tom?
$19.
$19.
So that was up from $16 from two years ago.
And the tickets are $15 apiece?
So as requested by the board, I've been looking into different options regarding parking enforcement, especially when it comes to the technology that surrounds it. As Greg said, Ken's on to do a small or short presentation of what he thinks would be a viable option for the town. We've met a couple of times. His company offers parking solutions that are available to municipalities at basically no cost, and they're supposed to enhance compliance and, you know, streamline our enforcement. So we come up with a kind of a pilot program, so to speak. We've met a couple of times. This pilot program that he'll go over outlines a few areas of town where we would put these safety sticks. It's not kiosks, so it's no pay parking. But I would let him explain how the safety stick works. But the pilot program would run for like 120 days over the summertime, and then we reevaluate, see if we want to expand it, or if it didn't work, then maybe possibly take it out, so.
Before we get to the presentation, which I'm very anxious to see, I just have a question about when we enforce. So for example, we're going to talk about resident parking later, and that's only enforced May through October, okay? The areas where there's just the two-hour parking turnover or whatever, is that enforced, or do we desire to enforce it 12 months out of the year, or is that also just a summer thing?
Well, I mean, that'd be a decision I think the board could make.
Well, what's the current policy, I guess?
Well, we go from like May 15 through... We try and run it if we have the people. We try and run it through Columbus Day weekend. And that's similar to what Rockport kind of does right now. They run their parking mostly seasonal. Their parking goes a little bit later into December, and then they shut down.
They start like April. I was just... It's like April to October. Okay, so I guess my just general comment before we get into the specifics of the presentation, whatever we decide to do, I'd just like to make sure our policy and our signs match what we say we're going to do, because they really don't now. And that just confuses people, and when people get confused, they make mistakes. They get tickets they shouldn't get, and they get angry. So I'm just hoping that once we make our decisions, we can get everything all aligned. That was it.
So I guess, if Ken is on.
Great. Hello, everyone. I'm Ken Wallens. I'm not sure if it's allowing me to share my camera, so I'm not trying to hide from everybody. I'm a little bit of a rogue warrior this week, so I'm sorry I can't be there in person. What I'd like to do is share a... I do have a PowerPoint. I think any permission to share the document, where I can just kind of discuss conceptually how the platform works.
Is it going to allow you to share?
Yeah, it says host disabled... Disabled participants. Okay. You should be good now. Yeah, looks like I'm good. Here we go. Okay. Okay, I want you to see my screen now? Yes. Great. Okay. So I'm with Municipal Parking Services. We've been in the parking technology business for about a dozen years. And I've been focused primarily on this platform that we have, which is essentially an evolution of the existing technology we have and is designed to improve public safety. And so we've partnered, for example, with the Vision Zero Network. You might have seen some of the publicity that our company got front page Boston Globe coverage and affiliate coverage with the work that we're doing in Somerville to help them achieve some of their Vision Zero objectives. So while Manchester by the Sea may not have Vision Zero, I think everybody can identify with safe street initiatives. And so that means keeping public roadways clear, crosswalks, you know, bus stops, bike lanes, narrow intersections, hydrants, those spots, keep them clear for pedestrians and bicyclists. And so what we've done is come up with a technology. I call this right here Starbucks Syndrome. And I think every city has a problem like that, where it's kind of a known problematic area. It's a nuisance where people park even though they know that they shouldn't, and it causes havoc. And I think there's a lot of kind of uneducated, innocent ignorance I described, where people don't really understand that it's a safety hazard. And I think that there's a tendency for people to kind of lump together the nuisance of receiving an overtime parking ticket with the very real hazard that's created when someone parks illegally. I'll just kind of cover this briefly, but you know, there's several drivers, some of those from the larger cities that we work with. What they really like is that we're not saying when people are out. We know nothing about the driver. All we know is that this vehicle with this license plate parked here at this time, they left at this time, and therefore there's a violation. And please jump in if there's any questions along the way. My intention here is really to facilitate discussion. I will talk a little bit about our business method. One of the things that I'm really proud of is we've come up with a way to help improve public safety in a manner that allows us to take on a full burden of performance and also to bear the full economic risk. And we can do that because our technology is battle-tested. It's predictable for us. So in the case of illegal parking, we know that it's going to reduce the frequency of this type of behavior by about 90 to 95% typically. And what's interesting is that there's a deterrent effect that will kick in after several months. You know, the first few months you can look at as a very important data collecting period because that phase will allow you to get baseline data. Typically, what we see happen is two things. On the one hand, you see that the deterrent effect is kicking in. People are modifying the behavior, and so you see a reduction of that type of activity over time. What we also see is that baseline, once it reaches a steady state, will remain quite high, four or five times higher than it had been historically. And the reason for that is simply because we have, you know... When you're relying on patrol enforcement or direct enforcement, it's effective maybe 5% of the time. We're capturing virtually all the violations that take place 24 by 7. This is some examples of it in the wild. And one of the things I want to cover here, too, is that what we discussed with Chief Fitzgerald and Mr. Fetterstil briefly is the enforcement of illegal parking, we can also deploy this platform for timed limited parking. So that's one example where it's not enforcing, you know, hazardous behavior, and therefore we can be a little bit more lenient on the grace period. It's very predictable for us in terms of 15 to 30-minute parking. I do feel like with the longer-term parking for the summer season, it'll be quite busy. But we do want to test those areas before we commit long-term to extend our business model. This is really more applicable to some of the larger cities, what we typically see. This is some of the media coverage we've gotten. Again, when you're thinking about places like New York City, they've been so lenient because it's such a problem that people are now parking right up to the crosswalk, and it's just not being enforced. And you can see what an issue that is in terms of public safety. There's some different deployments that we have. Again, it's really a function of population density. That's what drives scarcity. And then you see, you know, beachfront communities like Manchester by the Sea, where a solution like this is really needed. I'll point out here with Bridgeport, this is one of our success stories. When we went live in there, we were averaging about 11 violations per day for each location where the devices were deployed. And over about a six-month period, that reduced to an average of less than one per day. So it's a great success story. So you might be asking, how are we able to make money? What we're looking for is, if you're talking about $50 violation, for example, as the town has, we're looking for about seven or eight violations to be able to cover our costs. And I think that's imminently achievable based on my understanding of severity of the problem. I just want to pause here for a moment. I've done a lot of talking here. Any questions?
Becky?
When you say you're looking for roughly seven parking violations, I thought I read that you get a... You receive a percentage of each violation?
Yes, I'm sorry. So let me clarify. So our license model is such that it's performance-based. So we get paid only when there's a violation that's captured in the system and issued. So with our model, it's 40% of the posted violation amount. That means that we would get $20 for each violation. And so what we're looking... What we'd be looking for is almost 10 violations per month, or one every three days, which I believe would be imminently achievable. Now, cities, at their discretion, if we have sticks that are underperforming, would have the option of being able to pay the difference, and that difference is totaled and aggregated. So we haven't come across an instance where that has happened. We have had underperforming sticks, but in most cases, it's usually the municipality that decides, you really don't need the safety stick here, so, you know, you can take it out.
I have a question.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic.
So my question was, in the materials we were given, I saw a reference to the gateless parking. So I'm especially interested in how this could help us with compliance in the beach parking lots.
I think there are a number of challenges with that. And there's a very simple option that we have that might be something that could work for the city. My concerns are that there are a lot of moving parts in terms of the enforcement. And by that, I mean you have different time periods that are enforced, different locations that are allowed, and then you have permitted parkers and non-permitted parkers. And so it'd be very difficult for us to come up with a solution based on our technology that would allow for, you know, accommodate that type of enforcement. The other factor is that typically with lots and garages, our technology is deployed where there's many more spots. So we're talking about probably 1,000 spaces in a lot or a garage is a typical deployment. Most of the lots that we work in, it's kind of the best kept secret about our company, which really driving our growth, is that we're a white label provider of our technology, some of the largest lot and garage operators in the country. So I feel like the best bet here would be to start with a deployment that helps enforce the illegal parking and then some of the time-limited spaces. And then from there, we could evaluate how this could be deployed to help with some of the problems or challenges that you're facing with the lots and the garages.
Right.
Okay.
You mentioned that you've turned... That it's profitable for you based on the number of violations that are issued. Is that amortized over an entire year? Because we're just looking at trying to run a program currently seasonally for three and a half months. Can this be profitable for you plus work for the town with that limited seasonal usage?
Yes, we could absolutely come up with an agreement that accommodates that. To start with, we issue the first invoice after three months, so that you'll have some, you know, you'll essentially have had quite a bit of collections so that you're guaranteed to be in the black, you know, cash flow positive.
Just one more question. How do the violations actually get processed? You know, they read the license plate. You determine it as a violation. Do you use the state's, you know, the RMV database to send a ticket to somebody's house? Is that how it works?
Yeah, there are a number of ways we can do that, and I think that... We could have a discussion to talk about how we would deploy that. Before I get into that, I do want to emphasize that we cover all costs. That includes the connectivity, so we pay to... Typically with Verizon. We have wireless modems that we cover the cost for. We have people go on site and do the installation. We will replace the devices within reason if there's a problem with vandalism, which I certainly don't anticipate with Manchester by the Sea. We're in some pretty tough environments. I'm in New Jersey right now, and we've been very fortunate about how limited we've had any sort of incidence of vandalism. So this is how the process works. We have what they call...
I think we still have some questions. We have some... Still have some questions at this point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I think I'm going to get into it a little bit here. A stick really covers the two spaces or something like that, so they've got to be placed in various spots. But Diane is here. How many tickets are involved in a year? So like 800? I mean, our revenue is $35,000 or $40,000 out of tickets. At $50 a ticket on average? Tell me. I know what the revenue is. I'm just... Because that was in the... Well, I got that out of the...
$10 a ticket, just to write it.
Yeah, just do that. And I know it's about $40,000, so that's 800 tickets. And...
Mostly in the summer season.
Yeah, because you're not writing merely tickets.
The only time we... Is if we have a severe winter when we do the parking, winter parking.
Okay, I understand the winter park... Parking ban, okay.
So the $40,000 is what they can actually do with the enforcement capabilities they have. If it's automated, you're going to get 100% of the violations, and then the question is, how many tickets is it really?
I have one more question. And I'm just curious. I saw that some of the examples were... Most were in New York. But what is the smallest community with which you've worked?
Yeah, that's a great question. I would say it's Titusville, Pennsylvania. Very rural area.
And what is the population? I'm just curious.
So it's interesting. It's an interesting question, but there's not a direct correlation. So I have several very busy municipalities with small populations. Probably an extreme example would be Gottenburg, New Jersey, which has the distinction of being the most densely populated city in the country. And the population is something like twenty-five thousand. But the city itself is less than one square mile. So they have fifteen of these devices installed, which per square mile is quite a bit. And so really, I would say generally, it's a function of really two main drivers. One is population density. And so once we see a threshold of over five thousand or so per square mile, we generally see high volume. And then the other is if there's, you know, an attractive nuisance. So for example, I talked about Starbucks. Some municipalities that have a lot of tourism or for example waterfront communities like Manchester by the Sea tend to have ongoing problems with demand in certain areas.
Titusville, Pennsylvania, population was five thousand two hundred sixty-two at the 2020 census.
Yeah.
Lot of double-pod-tractors.
I had actually have a quick, I hope a quick question. Where, and I don't know whether it's the chief or for, where are you thinking about putting the sticks?
So we have identified some areas throughout the town for fire hydrants, no parking here at a corner. Some no parking zones, fifteen-minute zones in front of the post office. And then for the trial, the two-hour limit is the high-volume area. So from the tracks to tougher street. And that's really where the high volume is during those summer months where the traffic is.
Okay, so it's on-street parking?
On-street parking.
So I have one question, it's probably for the chief. Of these tickets that are written every year, how many are in-town and how many are out-of-town?
You mean resident versus non-resident?
Yeah, resident versus non, because what we're looking at here, of course, if you're overtime, you're overtime.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
But, you know.
That's how I read that it was majority is non-resident.
Okay.
I'd say seventy, thirty?
Yeah.
Just a guess.
And I'm basically a good-
This system is not set up to monitor resident parking. This will just be for overtime.
Well, he tended to speak about the lots out back where there's resident parking and timed limit parking. I think, Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, the beach parking is resident-only all the time. So I think that would be one of the only spots we could really look at, putting some of those.
Are you talking about on the street or monasimo that I'm saying?
No, I'm talking about the singing beach parking lot, the one we talked about the first time.
Yes, okay. Now, I had understood that to have approximately, what is it, a hundred guest spots? And then the rest is for residents, isn't it divided up, no?
No, singing beach is fully resident.
Not Monday through Thursday.
Not Monday through Thursday, yeah.
Monday through Thursdays, no, but on the weekends, it is fully resident.
Oh, I see, okay.
Which is when-
When we would need the enforcement.
When we would need, yeah.
Right, so if there was no question and it's just checking for a resident sticker going into the beach parking lot, could we use this capability for that? That's the question, I think.
Potentially. I think what we would want to do is look at it as a, on a trial basis because of the concerns that I expressed earlier. What we would, the way we would deploy it, by the way, is that it sounds like the town is really great about keeping on top of permits. So what we would do is essentially enforced by plate because we associate the permit with a plate. That's how our technology works.
Yep.
Yeah, just to make sure it was clear.
That would be exactly what we need. And part of the complaints I've received from residents is non-residents getting in there. Or there's a perception that non-residents are getting in there before the beach parking enforcement is there.
Mostly after the staff leaves.
Yeah, or after the staff leaves. And that's a concern. So I would think this automated solution could help with that type of problem.
But to that point, to that point, if you're doing it at the beach, someone's going to be willing to pay fifty dollars to get a parking ticket to go park at the beach. If there's no one there to say you can't go in there to monitor this, okay? I mean-
Well, then this was a revenue for the town.
Well, then, but you're going to piss off a lot of town residents who can't get in there.
Yeah, if you can get into the town lot before anybody shows up and get a fifty-dollar ticket, have a whole day at the beach.
Yeah, that's, I think, I would be more, I would think that if we were looking at gateless parking, we should look behind Town Hall.
But I think, so people getting there early before the beach staff arrives, they would get a ticket, then the beach staff arrives, and then you tow the vehicle out of the lot. That's what we would do.
It's the non-residents.
The non-residents would be towed out of the lot.
It's the non-residents.
I would like to just revisit the fact that we're going to be driving people from Beach Street into behind Town Hall. Because if there's going to be more stricter and almost a guaranteed parking ticket, if you're going to be there longer. And if you don't enforce the same way behind Town Hall, that's going to fill up really fast.
But this would also help the traffic, the parking enforcement officer concentrate on certain areas.
As long as we have, that's-
That's a really good point. You can use your human assets in a concentrated area and be more effective.
It just makes that parking enforcement officer rely less on covering whole town instead of specifically-
Chief, I spoke with your seasonal officer, I think, this past summer, who shows up, and I think he worked there pretty much every day, at least all the days he was on. And he said, when he shows up at nine or nine-thirty, he walks around the beach with a bullhorn because he knows there are cars in the lot already. And says, hey, you got fifteen minutes. And if you're not a resident, you better get out of here. And in general, he says, other people get in their cars and go. He has a response to that.
If I understand how the technology works, you would have to have one of these sticks for every two plating stations.
That's right. Like in all these intersections.
So excuse me, so-
Not in the gateless parking though.
Not in the gateless parking.
For the lot, unfortunately, the sticks wouldn't be an ideal solution. What we'd want to do is isolate a single entrance and exit, and we would use an overhead camera solution.
As good scanners they came in.
Parking garage should use it all the time now, right?
Yeah, that's what it would be.
How do you correlate residents with license plates?
Plate and permit. So you have the plate of the resident and the permit would match.
Permit number.
Yeah, permit number.
So it's reading both?
It's reading the plate, but the plate would match the permit that were issued.
On the database.
How do you-
You mean the sticker.
Where do you get the data and who has to check?
Well, Diane Yuen's been sending them out for two years, three years from that same information, correct? Is that how it goes? Right now, that's how beach stickers being?
Each permit is with, each sticker is associated with one license plate?
Yes, but this has to go to another, an outside company. And my concern is-
So I think the question is, we have the database with the plate numbers of people who have the permits. Do we need to give that to this company periodically? How do they keep their data fresh? So if somebody walks in on June fifteenth and gets a brand-new permit, they're not given a ticket erroneously?
So can I assume we give you updated database?
Correct. Yes, we'd want updated. So let me run this by you as an option, too. We have a very simple solution. And so think of all the churches and maybe even supermarkets, different types of businesses, private businesses that have spaces in a municipality. And those lots remain empty or nearly empty for most days. You know, a church in particular has many, many spots available. So we've come up with a way that allows these entities to monetize the lots. And so what I'm thinking is, it may fit for, seeing as Sam's, as a simple solution. Essentially, the way it works is, you know, everybody has a phone. So you don't need an app. We do have an app option. But we have, there would be a QR code that someone pulls up and they have to pay. And they either have to pay because they're not a resident. It would be during those applicable hours when they're allowed to park there. Or if they're a resident, it would just allow them to have a parking session. They'd be allowed to go into the park. We charge a fee for each discussion. And then the challenge here, though, is that it's left up to the municipality to handle the enforcement. So again, it's not the ideal solution in the sense that it's not going to have that automated ticket being sent by the mail. You'd have to have enforcement officers either ticket, by leaving a ticket on the windshield or by towing even.
So I thought the option that we looked at in the information provided, though, is just, you know, there would be some sort of camera or scanner that scans people on the way into the parking lot. And if there was a violation, would handle it. I think that's kind of what would be ideal rather than having someone stop and use a QR code. Because that would, you know what I'm saying? I'm just trying to differentiate between the material that was provided to us versus what's being discussed.
I'm having trouble with the idea, the business is-
I understand that. My concern is only that it wouldn't fit with our economic model because of the volume. That's my major concern. But let me go back to the drawing board and see. If we, I have an engineer that I work very closely with and he might be able to come up with some ideas.
We're talking half of an hour.
Right, now, my concern at the moment is we have one church with a parking lot.
But we also have the, now, Chief and I have discussed this. The district has an opportunity now to add-
School district.
Monitorizing your parking lot during the summer.
The district has, they have, I think they have only two. But, yeah.
I mean, that's something down the road that's already considered.
And it's a long walk to the beach.
Could I?
You tell me, the people doing it all the time?
Yeah, people do it.
Yes.
Could we go ahead and just listen to the rest of the presentation?
I think that the key challenge at Manchester by the Sea base is, from my view, and I remember this from high school, I grew up in Sudbury, is that you've got the best beach in the Northeast.
Yeah.
You won't argue with that.
It's just true.
Reach into the choir.
Yeah.
Please go ahead.
Oh, go ahead with that.
So, yeah, just a quick overview of how technology works here.
So when I originally met a couple of years ago, we were talking about a hard-wired device. So we really view that as a legacy solution. We do still have some of those available. Those have two cameras, but it's a lot more intrusive. We have to tap in and do, you know, micro trenching to get a power source and all that. So now we have a solar-powered device, which has really been a game changer. The limitation of that in comparison is that one device monitors one spot. So as you can see here, we have a spot that's, I call it a defined area. So for example, you know, hydrant space, it's very clearly marked for us. With, you know, there's white lines, so we know where to position the device. Essentially, it's designed to capture, you know, a range of about twenty-five feet. This is an example of one in use. There's really four key steps here. I talked a little bit about the first step, which is we capture the violation in progress and it goes up into the cloud. And we have our own team of reviewers who quality-check it. The idea being that we want this to be a productivity tool for the enforcement officers that are serving witnesses to the violations. So the first step is the violations go up into the cloud. The second step is that the authorized officers get unique logins that correspond with their badge numbers. They're able to log in and rather than be physically on-site, they're going to be sitting at a desktop hopefully with a cup of coffee to serve as witnesses to the violation. They're going to view and approve the violation. They'll hit submit. And then step four is that we produce what we call an evidence form. And that's going to have, you know, kind of a code that, first of all, it's going to have the ticket number. It's going to have a code that identifies the officer, a description of the violation. And then most importantly, it's going to have timestamp photos of when the violation began and the full duration. And so this is important because if someone decides to appeal a violation, hey, well, maybe you shouldn't be parked in front of a hydrant for twenty-seven minutes, right? We have a standard grace period of ninety seconds. Some municipalities have asked us to reduce that to a minute. We really prefer not to. And in some cases, we've extended it, which we've done in Somerville and some of the really densely populated places in New Jersey where we are right now. Lynn, Massachusetts, they've assigned the printing and mailing to us. And so we connect to, it's called the Endlets database. And we get an agency authorization from the police chief to be able to do that. That allows us to connect directly. So in this instance, we have, this is Bridgeport, Connecticut. What they do is they print out their standard violation and then mail it together with the evidence form. And then Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania, this is an example of a fully integrated violation, which is what I envision we could do for Manchester by the Sea, where we would essentially have all this standard look and feel. We could build this from a template that you would provide us with. And then it would have the essential components of the evidence form. And then that's sent by mail. To have us, I really want to be clear that we don't charge extra for anything. If you do want to assign the mailing to us, that's a sub-cost that you would have to bear anyway. We do it for just about three dollars per mailing. And I think you would find that competitive with what the cost would be for time and materials. And that includes postage, of course.
So I've got a question. Did you say that a police officer has to witness the violation? So he or she is online, whoever is on duty is online and knows when a stick has determined that there's a violation somewhere?
Yes, that's exactly right.
And then he or she must show up? And I'm not sure how they validate observing that, but-
Leave that validating by the photo.
Online.
Fine, okay. In other words, what, a police officer is there in the photo? Say, hey, I'm looking at your plate and I'm looking at the time, okay?
Is it actually a police officer?
Exactly.
Could be a parking officer?
Yeah, or a parking, yeah, so enforcement officer, right.
So you would change the parking enforcement officer from a walking around to a sitting down?
Well, they'd be walking around while they're on duty at the end of the day and then come in and log into this.
Right.
This doesn't have to be contemporaneous?
Oh, okay, that's a good one.
It doesn't have to be-
But at the time.
Yeah, it has to be instant.
Ah, okay, all right.
So kind of duties, like last, now we'll go back into the-
So the way it works typically is when we capture a violation, it goes up in the cloud, it's approved and available to review within forty-eight hours. And so as a best practice, we recommend that officers log in each day. I don't envision that the volume would be prohibitive. I think it would be, you know, significant. But I don't think we'd be talking about, you know, maybe in the early days, it would be fifty or so. I can't imagine it would be much higher than that. We do see those numbers drop down very quickly. That reminds me, one of the questions that came up was about the percentage of residents versus non-residents who are going to get tickets. And we work in some areas with the demographics, you know, some of the more urban settings. As a practice, they try to be more lenient on the enforcement of parking for meters, you know, for timed parking and so forth because they don't want to be taxing their residents. And so what they found is that by stepping up the enforcement of their truly hazardous parking, that they've been able to maintain that strategy.
So I guess the only question, another question left then is, I think, Chief, you were going to talk about where, you know.
Yeah, Ken, did you have that map that we mapped out?
Yes, I can share that. Let me just-
And if you decide to do this, I think prior to the implementation, I'd like to walk around with Ken just to get a file.
Before we do that, I just want to ask, just want to clarify. So what we're saying is that someone, they're thrown to a parking spot, it automatically activates the camera and then they get two hours, any resident, non-resident, if it's two-hour parking. And then at two hours, a hundred and twenty-one minutes, if that car is still there, the ticket is issued.
Excuse me, Ken, just a minute, please.
Sorry.
Is, and this is with the safety stick? Because those are solar-powered, is that correct?
Yes.
We have a lot of tree cover here and I, not so much. Let's see the map first, yeah, okay.
Not cloudy days, it's going to be true.
Sure, I'm not concerned because what we found is it doesn't really have to be, you know, direct sunlight. What we're looking for is about an hour of sunlight per day. The battery is designed such that it will perform without a charge with moderate use for over four weeks. for over four weeks. So, and we would get a signal if there's an issue with the battery. You know, if we find that it's a low charge, for example.
Anyway, we could make this a little bigger.
I'm sorry, re-speak.
There it is, okay.
So the blue dots are?
So you can see the blue dots are fire hydrants.
Okay.
I'm not sure how helpful this is.
That's good, yeah, I think the Chief would be now.
Yeah.
This is a no parking zone here, obviously from the front, the.
Station.
Fire station down to like lower insurance. We mapped out the 15 minute zones here next to the police station.
So I'm sorry, are the blue, are the blue dots the, where you would put the safety stick? Okay, just wanted to double check.
Yes.
And then, yeah, School Street, Union Street, where no parking here at the corner.
Yeah.
But no, that's a no parking zone here in front of the library. We go move out, just zoom out a little bit. And this is the section we would do the, it's 15 minute spots, fire hydrant, fire hydrant up here.
That's music, okay. That's Beach Street.
Let's, let's see Beach Street.
Beach Street.
Yeah, Beach Street down here, up the other way, Ken.
Towards the beach.
Up, up?
No, the other way, other way.
Oh, okay.
Where the two hour spots are.
Yeah.
Right here, so from here all the way down to.
Oh, right, right, okay.
The top.
And then how many sticks will be there?
So there's 20.
22, I think you said.
22 we counted here.
In the spots you just named, in total, it's about 22.
Yeah, and then when we do the new crosswalk at 40 Beach, the other crosswalks.
Oh, yes, okay. Where are you going to park?
Well, no, I'm sitting on Central Street, so I'm good.
A question I had.
There's one right in front of you, I have.
Okay, let's, Kathy.
A question I had, and it goes to my very first question, about when do you currently enforce? Because the timed, like some cities stop enforcing the timed parking after 6:00 PM.
We do 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Okay, so that would be when it says 30 minute parking, 15 minute, that's 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
The 30 minute parking next to the station would be 24/7.
Whoops.
So I guess it goes back to my original point. Automated enforcement is wonderful, I'm a big fan of it. The sign has to be clear. So if you're only going to enforce it between 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM, the sign needs to say that. If it's a 24 hour enforcement, the sign should say that too. Because the good thing is the enforcement will be better. But if we're not making it easy for people to do the right thing by having a clear sign, we're going to make people very angry.
I agree, I mean, it's something we'd have to work with even more.
That's all I'm saying, make sure Chuck is brought into the loop before the stick goes up. Does the sign match what we're trying to do here? That's really what I only care about.
And at this point, we're talking May 15 through.
Around that time, yeah, May 15. It's 120 days, I think we.
First or May 15th?
I forget, but it was May.
On the resident parking, it's May 1st.
Well, I don't, I don't start the parking enforcement, I really typically don't start till around May 15.
I guess I think it was Memorial Day. I got screwed a couple of years ago.
Again, consistency, I think, is important.
Let me, let me just make sure I understand. The sticks that you're talking about here are for timed parking.
No, it's combination.
And, and no parking.
And, and no parking, yes. We're not trying to control resident parking yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree, and I, my point is if there's an inconsistency between when we enforce resident parking versus timed parking, I think that's not good because it's confusing to people. If we can, you know, consistency is better, especially when you're dealing with automation. So if there's an opportunity to align those two, you know, and make May 1st for, make it May 1st for everything, I just think it causes less confusion.
Well, we also don't want to be treating any group differently than another, I think.
Well, with the, with the automation now, May 1st wouldn't be a problem.
Exactly, is my point, right?
I'm just thinking you might need to change the bylaw for the hourly parking if you wanted to do it May 1st and whatever, because technically it's hourly parking, two hour parking year round and then that might create a.
So that's why I asked the question, right? There's no, when I look at the signs that are just dealing with the hourly parking, I don't see a time period. I only see a time period with the resident parking. So my assumption is that it's enforced 365 days a year, the timed parking. I think the good news is that we can actually do that now. And whether we should, you know, I just think our, we need to have consistency.
So, we need to have consistency, but is it sufficient consistency to say that all timed parking is year round?
Yeah.
And all resident parking is May 1st?
Yes. I think it's going to be new for the residents who might be a violator on the timed parking and to get a ticket in the dead of January, okay? So that's going to be something new, so, and I don't think that's a bad thing, but I just think it's going to be new and we ought to prepare the community to say, you know, and we are enforcing parking year round.
Yes.
There is. Union and, Union and School Street, how many units are there? 16 units now? Central, my building is four units there. Above the, I mean, there's a lot of residents on Central Street.
Yes.
Okay, that rely on Central Street for parking. So.
Yeah, well, they're not supposed to. So.
Yes, we are.
No, you're not, two hour parking.
I'm not getting up at 3:00.
You're spending. No, no, it's, it's two hour parking between 6:00 in the morning and 6:00 at night. So you get them till 10:00.
Yeah, those, those maps are going to be really expensive. But we're not, we're not talking Central Street for the.
For the first one.
For the first one, so.
We'll litigate.
Are you asking for our approval tonight to go forward with a pilot on the safety six?
Yes, and see how they work, beginning this May 1st.
May 1st.
How many in the, how many would be done for the?
Twenty, 22, he said.
Oh.
22, I don't know.
That's just Beach Street.
That's just Beach Street, then the other.
You've got another 20.
Oh, so how many total?
Could you clarify the pilot, the scope of the pilot?
So Beach Street would be more of a timing aspect and all the other ones would be mostly based on safety, like fire hydrants, no parking zones.
Crosswalks.
Crosswalks.
So the pilot includes timed parking on Beach Street and the other locations is just no parking?
Correct.
Okay, and nothing in the lots?
Except in the post office in the 30 minute.
And nothing in the lots?
Not yet. I just to see how it goes.
Okay. Well, do we not have to go through, is kiosks next or?
Well, that was all, Ken, Ken, I agree. You can discuss the kiosks, right, Ken?
So, yeah, again, I think because of the cost, I'm not sure if the kiosk would be the right solution.
Why don't we just start right there? Yeah.
I think we start small, like we want to do now, and then if we need to ramp it up, we can.
I, I like that.
Right. And this parking is really resident, non-resident, doesn't make any difference, you're dealing with.
Just timed.
Can you park here, can any car park here? And are you overtime? And I don't care where you're from or anything.
Right.
Okay.
Love it.
That's the cleanest way to start.
I think we may as well take a vote to allow the Chief to go forward with the safety stick pilot as described.
I'm so moved.
Second, further discretion. Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Ken says yes.
John says yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, everyone.
I'll be in touch.
Great.
Okay, take care of it.
Okay, that brings us to number C of F in this list.
Number?
Letter C, letter C. Ticket appeals. In the general ticket appeal area, our notes say the ticket has, the sticker has to be affixed. Is it enough to say that the ticket has to be visible from in the front driver's side?
Okay, the sticker?
The sticker. Since it's like, it is kind of a parking.
You're looking at me, I'm your town clerk, I'm your booker. I didn't make up the rules, I think the sticker always had to be affixed.
Yeah.
The new stickers actually stick to the cars where the others were decals.
Right.
If it's not stuck on the window, it's very easy to be moved to another car. Even though the plate is on it, it's easy to not, you know, for the kids. So I would say, yes, it needs to be affixed to the car. That's what I would say.
And relative to that, I'm probably out of order, but because I had spent some time trying to get the stickers off in January, probably move it back to May so that.
Go to your gas station, ask them to remove it, they'll do it, where you get your stickers done.
Your whole cottage industry.
Great, great, fine, let me take it, residents.
Pull into the garage at the police station.
No, I actually ran my car for eight minutes, going nowhere.
So you're the one.
Yeah.
You're coming for.
Anyway.
Exactly.
Okay. So what other questions on, on ticket appeals?
Greg.
Well, in the past, you know, there's been discussion about, you know, zero tolerance versus a mulligan. You know, a mulligan's problematic, but you have expressed that in the past. I just want to have clarity before we go into a new season.
What type of tickets are we talking about? Just parking tickets?
Yes.
Just parking tickets for resident parking violations or all types of parking?
All types.
All types of parking tickets, okay. Well, since we're moving to a more automated approach, my feeling is there, there will be greater objectivity in that type of process and I would hope fewer appeals, but it could have the opposite effect. People won't be used to getting tickets for doing something and all of a sudden they will start getting tickets because we've stepped up enforcement. So I would rather try to communicate as effectively before we start the enforcement period this year to encourage compliance rather than, I think, getting into too many, you know, mulligans. But I, I mean, there's got to be some discretion involved here, but I think we need to trust our town employees to operate with that discretion, but, that's kind of my two cents.
I think that if we open up to leeway, that we, we can encounter some problems with that if somebody says, well, how come so and so got a mulligan? I didn't get one.
Yeah.
As well as kind of going backwards with some other situations.
Yeah. Diane, I assume that, and I don't know how many people you have to deal with and you had a very difficult job with this, and I assume that a lot of the stuff is not necessarily black and white. There are lots of circumstances that surround things. I mean, right now, we rely on your judgment as to what the story is. And I know that there was a memo that went around, I guess maybe 20% or so, there's some percentage that, yeah, you'll, whatever the reasons are, you say, okay, well, we're not going to deal with that, but.
So I, I do think that the hearing officer needs to make some decisions, things aren't really black and white, but I would recommend that there are parking rules and regulations that are on the website that I've amassed from where I do the business and they have to be approved by you. And that's usually, that's what I had always gone by, that's how I did that. We have a new hearing officer and I assume she will do the same thing as us, to make sure that we're, everybody's okay and on the same page with the same regulations.
So the only thing I would say is, and I 100% agree with that, when you enter into the world of automation, there will be data mistakes, okay? Garbage in, garbage out. There may be somebody, you know, like you said, if you only upload the database, you know, so often, you know, there can be data mistakes. So those are the kinds of situations that may require some judgment, right? That we should allow the town employees to exercise. But other than that, you violate it, but you get a ticket.
Since we're not, we're not doing resident.
Yes, yes, but there may be other, you know, situations where we start to automate and things get a little clearer, but there are always situations where the data could be wrong.
Have you dealt with automated systems like this in the past?
No, I have not.
I'm just curious whether this will make your life easier or less easy.
We visit this next year.
Be good to check with your town clerk or city clerk, partners.
Parking clerks aren't always in the city, in the town clerk's office, a lot of times it's in the treasurer's office or.
The treasurer's office, whatever.
It's kind of all over the place on there, but all the communities have, you know, the kiosks or all that stuff at this point, but bring it on, we'll do what needs to be done. As long as you have some, we have some guidance, I think we'll be good to go.
Anything else on, so do you have enough guidance on, on ticket appeals? Is there anything else that we should say?
As long as everybody's okay with the rules and regulations that are on the website and whatnot, then we'll be good to go.
Okay. Overnight parking. Becky? I'm sorry.
Oh, I have questions on the, I actually have a, I'm bringing it up on here because, anyway, yes, I have questions when we're in there.
Okay.
Okay, this is, I have to go to the pages, which town did we just watch? This is, okay. Overnight parking on, sorry, wrote it down on the pages, but it's not showing up which page here, overnight. Sorry.
While you find it.
Yes, while we're gone.
John, do you have any questions on?
There we are.
The North Street, I guess I had a question here. The North, the North, the Norwood lot is often filled with seven spots that are taken up by folks who are out of town for months and I'm just not sure. Somebody's counted, there are seven regular.
How do we know that?
Yeah.
My question is, how do we know that there are seven people parking there?
The same seven.
Close to long-term parking and they have to get a parking placard to the time.
Okay, so they are doing so with permission?
Yes.
Oh, okay, that wasn't clear, okay. So the question before us is do we want to continue to reserve those seven spots or make, open it up to other people? Okay, that, thank you, I was not clear. Thank you, John.
Is this, and when they're out of town for months, are these snowbirds who run to Florida like now, or is this any time of the year, car doesn't work?
I think it's both.
Both, but it could be any.
As long as the vehicle's inspected and registered and insured.
Right, then it's okay, but it's not a seasonal thing necessarily.
Not necessarily.
So we do, we know.
People work for a month-long trip in the summer, they want to park their car.
Understood.
My question was, do we know the lots that are being referred to, are they used by residents in multifamily housing that don't have access to the driveway?
Yeah.
Is there most of resident parking or except for those seven spots?
So those seven are non-resident? I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, they're, they're, it's resident parking only so anyone can park there.
Okay.
But except for those seven spots that are long-term.
Long-term.
For residents.
Okay.
Becky?
Okay. Under the parking placards. um, for the temporary placards, non-resident use, it's $50 a week for short-term rentals with proof of rental. And that includes singing beach parking. Is this something that, that, um, if they're a guest from out of town, we just give them a...
No, they have to be rented. It's a, this is like an Airbnb.
I get that, but why are we, that, that should be somebody who's not a, they're not a resident. I mean, shouldn't they, they're not a resident. I don't think they should be having singing beach parking.
Is that why they rented the, the place?
Well, you can rent a place, but I mean, a resident...
So, so...
Resident parking is resident parking. From, it is for me in terms of singing beach.
We wanna talk about one versus the other, they may be, um, we were talking about overnight parking.
I know.
There may be two different answers, I don't know.
Well, I think they're two different, you're right, they're two different questions.
Okay.
But I think they're both good questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and I think, I haven't heard anyone saying that the seven people who use the Norwood lot for long-term parking should have to go and find an alternate place.
Yeah, what problem are we trying to solve, I guess?
It's just freeing up spaces.
Freeing up spaces.
Do we need them? Or because, do we need them?
Is that lot always full or...
Yeah, I would say that lot's pretty much always full.
Lot's full most of the time and then people with a business placard, like they work at Crosby's.
Okay.
They'll park up there.
Right, so, so we're trying to get people to get off of Main Street.
So where do they go? Where do they go?
Trying to free up spaces for the businesses.
Understood, but where do they go?
They park on the, on the street and rotate their, they come and move the car in two hours.
Somebody's gone to Florida for two months. Where do they go?
Okay, um, having, having done this in the past, um, there are businesses that rent space long-term and they can be found. And, you know, I, if you have an extra car and, and drive me away, you go to somebody who's got an old barn and rent a space.
Right.
Is that a service that the town will have to be providing?
I don't think so. Especially if we have employees who don't have parking.
Yeah, I mean, it's a luxury. What are we charging for the long-term parking?
Nothing.
That is not okay. Right there. Uh, taking up seven spaces and not getting anything. That's what I have a problem with. If we wanted to be in the business of, of, you know, generating some revenue for that, fine. But I, I agree with the consensus. I'm not sure we wanna be providing that service.
We're suggesting a change to the policy to eliminate long-term parking in Norwood, at the, at the town parking lot.
Yeah, I guess personally, before making the change, I just wanna make, I would wanna understand a little bit of the history of why those people. Uh, is it the same seven people or it's just whoever gets to it first?
Whoever gets to it first and gets the permit, yeah.
Okay, so it's really not...
Most of the time it's the same.
And are the, and are they snowbirds or they just have an extra car that, that we just don't, we don't have?
I have to go look into it.
Is that a, is that a, uh, how long do we issue the parking permits for? What's considered long-term?
Anything over a week. I may just try to help you a little bit with that.
Yeah.
So they take out the long-term parking and they leave their car there. I don't know why they, you can leave your car anywhere in resident parking as long as you want. So you don't really need to take up that space.
Right.
But because they're in those spaces, we now have their, um, contacts, emergency contacts. So then the police have to, if there's an issue or they need something, then they're kind of watching over those cars.
But I, what, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, um, I lost my train of thought a little bit. What, uh, when, is this long-term parking, it's not for a defined period? Like I'm gonna get a space for three months? They just come in and say, I need it for a month or I need it for six months?
No, they reserve, they say, I'm going out for two weeks. They give us the dates.
They define.
Okay, so they define you.
They define it.
Some are a couple of months, yes.
There's no...
Couple of months, okay.
Okay, so one space could be used for two weeks 'cause someone's going on vacation, but somebody else can use it two weeks later when, when it's freed up, right? Okay.
But it's occupied round the clock.
No, I understand, I understand.
I think part of the problem there and...
So somebody's been there for like, sometimes they come in and ask for three months, four months? Okay, so I mean, sometimes it's many months.
So my question then is though, is that long-term parking, is that, because it's resident only, is it only enforced during the season, May through October? Or does somebody come in in January and say, can I have a long-term parking pass? Okay. So the reality is, if we take away that ability to request the long-term parking pass, that person who is probably a resident, right? Can just go, like you said, park on School Street or Pine Street and just leave their car there. And there's nothing illegal about that, but there's, if there's...
Except there's snow. There's snow.
Right. Okay, thank you, I better understand. Okay, um, what?
I'm, I'm just thinking, that's what's gonna, in the summer, that's what'll happen. In the winter, I think people have a problem. Because you don't know what's gonna happen with the weather.
Well, they can park their car at the airport before their trip or they can find somewhere else to park it, you know, garage. That's, that, there's a cost to that, right? So right now, they're getting something for free. And I think the question is, should they be getting something for free? I, I personally don't think so. But there's, there are options we could discuss, which could include limiting the amount of time, you know, allowing someone to park there two weeks for a trip and pay a small fee. Or just not allow it, you know, there's options.
It, it sounds as if this is something that we are, need to think about a little more.
Right, I agree.
So could we put long-term parking in Norwood on our list of, of future events?
Cause that might be something, once we do the pilot, that we find there are business, perhaps employees, business, who, who say, well, I need somewhere to park and I don't have anywhere. So that, that, that might come to light.
Specifically, I'd like the Greg and team to come back to us with options rather than us doing all the brainstorming here.
For the long-term parking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what I was bringing up, cause that's item number six under the, the parking placards. And what I was starting to talk about were the numbers prior to the long-term parking placard, the long-term parking that we were just discussing. So can we, now that we've talked about the, the number six, the long-term parking, can we go back to...
Okay, that's, that's resident-only streets? I'm sorry.
This is just under parking placards.
Boater plaques?
Which is...
There's, there's overnight parking and there was the, the Norwood, but that was a special case of the long-term overnight.
Right, and that was number six.
Overnight, overnight could, could include, um, overnight parking at, at, at the Tux Point parking lot.
Well, we're not doing overnight yet, are we? I mean, this is just long-term that we were talking about, the long-term.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong, I must be looking at the wrong option.
Um, I am trying to figure out what page.
I'm looking at 6B parking placards. Is that what you were looking at?
Yep, that's what I'm looking at.
So that is this document here in resident pla, yeah. And this is parking placards page.
Yes, so it's right under, we, we were given resident parking bylaw amendment.
Sorry.
And, um, but that's under the parking discussion. So...
What?
When we were talking about reviewing the, the changes which are being part of the discussion. But now bringing it down to, cause we did the residence stickers, we talked about that. So under the parking placards specifically, I had, um, and again, parking placard must be visible on the dashboard, affixed.
Uh huh.
Uh, not affixed, these are the placards that are temporary.
Right.
So under the temporary placard, where it was saying non-resident use for $50 for the week for a short-term rental with proof of rental, including singing beach parking. That's where, um, I don't know why we are, um, providing parking for, I mean, a, a, a parking at the, at singing beach. I can see giving them parking in, in town parking on a, in residential area. I can see that. I just don't...
Cause again, $50?
For, for a week. So they can go park at the beach every day. And it only costs them $50.
Deal it twice the price.
That's, I'm saying that, that we're underwriting the rental, the, the, the short-term rental by providing them with parking.
We're certainly providing more value.
Yeah.
Whether it's underwriting then.
No.
But, yes.
Subsidizing perhaps.
Subsidizing, thank you. That's, so I, I just, that was one thing that stuck out to me and I didn't know if anybody else had any thoughts on that one.
Currently, if you rent, you, you, the rental would include beach parking.
Well, that's a year-round rent, right? You're a renter, you're a year-round renter. This is non-resident rental. So that's what I'm talking, this is short-term, non-resident.
Airbnb. And there's a reason they rented here.
Yeah.
But the question is, and Becky's bringing up a good point, should they be, be able to park at the beach for free, basically?
Well, for $50, but that's pretty inexpensive.
And then $35, $35 to walk off.
Yeah, that's just a park.
Well, unless the person who owns the unit has gone and purchased a couple of tags and leaves them in the unit. This is...
Well, I'm looking at the statistics. There were 18 passes that were...
Right.
I mean, this is not a...
Airbnb is becoming far more, I think, probably, I'm just bringing up...
Oh, I wonder if, you know, so I, I think this might be worth discussing perhaps again at another meeting.
No.
But perhaps the town staff could come up with some options which might include one fee for not using the beach and a higher fee for using the beach.
I mean, if I go down to the beach as a resident.
Right.
I wanna park there.
Right.
I don't want somebody who's a non-resident having the same privilege as someone who is the resident taxpayer.
Or another option could be allowing these people at a higher fee to, to park at the beach Monday through Thursday and not park on the weekends. If they're gonna be here all week, then maybe they can, they don't need to be there on the busy weekends.
The beach might be underutilized parking as far as revenue.
Right.
Monday through Thursday.
Right.
So it's $50 and that gets them, uh, access to the beach Monday through Thursday. I don't mind with that.
Or I even put in Friday. I don't think Friday is that much crazier. It's the weekends really.
Let's keep Mark the beach on, on the weekends.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're talking about now having two tiers.
At least not, but not a figure.
Two tiers of, of...
Temporary.
Temporary parking.
For non-residents.
How much of a challenge is that going to be for the parking clerk, et cetera, and for the enforcement at the beach? Cause certainly we're still having somebody at the parking lot who has to...
If someone's down there checking, you know, resident.
I mean, it could be a different color. I mean, these, these, these temporary placards are not affixed to the vehicle. They are placards. You could have a temporary placard which, you know, is one color for allowing it on the beach and a red one which says, no beach for you on the weekends or something. You know, it doesn't have to be visually...
Yeah, and the placards are colors. And as it states, embossed with the town's steel so that...
Okay.
You know, they're not readily duplicating, duplicatable.
They can make a class.
Exactly.
So simply, call you frankly.
Sir, please, insert your hand.
Yes. Sarah, you're on...
Sorry, the unmute wasn't working. Thank you so much for taking my question. Um, I have a few questions about the whole issue about beach parking. So if we go on vacation to visit our family in Newport, Rhode Island, we are not allowed to go to any of the beaches that are, would be tactically, I guess, put in the category of singing beach, which we don't really have any public beaches, singing is public, but we are not allowed to pay to park to go there. Um, I guess I'm wondering, I, I think everyone should be able to access the beach and plenty of people do. But I'm wondering what, what is the real question, what we're trying to achieve here?
This is, uh, this is for people who largely are renting here. If you're going to visit relatives someplace, my kids come and visit me, they have no rights to the beach here. Except what they can get through their parents, but they, you know, they're just visiting. And you're just visiting, but you know...
Do they take your car to the beach? Cause then that would be acceptable.
No, they can't take their car, they don't live here.
This is your car.
Your car.
No, no, your car.
Oh, well, okay, sometimes that's, that's what works out. You gotta shift all of the little kids' seats around and everything, it's a pain, but...
Yeah, no, totally, exactly. And then I just put one question into the chat and as soon as I did, the chat was disabled, which is a little concerning, cause I guess I have some questions as to why we keep referring to Manchester by the Sea as urban. We are definitely not an urban community. And I think we have a lot of, um, concerned citizens that are... Sorry?
First, and I shouldn't, we shouldn't announce it every time, we do not use the chat during meetings. Because the chat is not recorded and, um, it's under the open meeting law. Um, you can't have a side channel.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I just, it was there, so I used it. I'm so sorry, apologies.
Don't, don't be sorry, just, I will try and remember to...
You should just, we're supposed to decide from the beginning.
I will note, I will note that for the future. Um, if I could repeat my...
Referring to Manchester as urban, if you're talking about the, um, parking, um, automated policeman, um, he's dealing with, no one is trying to turn Manchester into an urban environment. Um, that's just somebody who's used to dealing with cities and has the wrong vocabulary for us. But that's a vendor and not the captain.
Okay, well, just to, if I could...
Sure.
Just repeat what I said in the chat. Um, I guess there are a lot of residents that are concerned with the MBTA zoning, the influx...
No, that's way off topic.
Yeah.
Well, it would be a...
It's not on the agenda, we cannot discuss that.
She's just trying to, she's just trying to relate it to...
Okay, totally got it. Thank you, Becky.
I think her partner's just trying to...
If there are more people around in the future, we're going to continue to have parking problems. I think we can agree to that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, let's see.
I have more.
Yes, please.
Okay. Under three, which is boater placard, it's, um, we don't specify, I don't see that there is, um, a specified amount of, um, the duration. So in other words, it says, placking, placards, they can park Tux Point or specified areas if they're, you know, for mooring ownership. But are they allowed to park, is that overnight? Well, there is no duration notified, uh, no, no, written on this. So is it, they can park during the day? They can park five days in a row? Because there's been a problem at Tux Point with that in the past? As we've had people say.
Yeah, it was a trailer park.
Exactly. And is that what's supposed to be going on there?
Okay, that's a good question. Does anybody have an answer?
My, my assumption is it was pretty much overnight. Because otherwise, you really don't need placards to go out to your boat someplace. to go out to your boat someplace. I mean, you can park wherever you can find a spot.
But Tux Point is resident-only. The area behind the town hall near the ramp, there's a limited area.
But it's, it's, it's resident. We're, we're talking, we're talking, you know...
Not necessarily.
Yeah.
So mooring holders... Mooring holders who are not residents will request a voting placard so that they can park. So the question then becomes, is it okay for those voting placard holders if they're going on an overnight voting trip, to park overnight at Tux? In the past, we have allowed that.
Nothing is, currently, there's no rules that says you can't. You can't. The only rule there is is resident parking.
Now, I have a question. Behind the town hall, those spaces along the fence, are they also two hours? They're placard only.
Placard, voter placard.
And that's, that's the only limitation?
Yep. But it's...
But it's not, it's not time limited.
It's not time limited on the day. You can, you could park there and disappear for a week.
Right.
Okay. Whereas in the center parts, there is a time limit, I think, for people who...
Resident and time.
Yeah.
So these are all good questions. Do we know what some of the neighboring towns and cities do, the seaside towns like Rockport or Gloucester? What do they do? Let moorings in there harbor. I think this is an area where I, I do think it's good to question it. But without some knowledge of what other folks are doing, I'm not comfortable changing anything.
Yeah, we can see. I don't know who has similar...
So that brings it up though. If, if no one does have anything similar, then why are we an outlier, right?
Like a Beverly or Marblehead.
I'm just thinking, Rockport's tiny, you know, do they allow...
Rockport's good.
Mooring holders to park their car and go out on a long fishing trip and leave their car there? I don't know. But I just think it's worth checking.
Check Rockport, Marblehead.
Yeah, I know.
But I was like, you know, Rockport has that little parking lot right off the downtown. I'm just curious.
Okay, so we're putting, um, the question of duration of parking on for mooring holders who are not residents on, are increasing list of things to think about.
She's not done.
I'm not. I'm sure she's not done.
No, I'm not done yet. I know. Then regarding, um, item four, the business placard. It's, if we're allowing, um, business employees parking between eight to six, you're, this, and if we're going to be monitoring twenty-four hours, there's some of the restaurants open beyond that six o'clock. And where, where do those employees park where they're not going to be ticketed? If we're going with...
Time parking, hourly parking, like day-to-day on the six.
At the six, you don't care.
But you said there are places that will have twenty-four hour?
Just the thirty-minute.
Just the thirty-minute behind town. I just want to make sure that, that restaurant employees or, or Ridge Steels or whatever are not going to be penalized.
So the twenty-four-hour parking that will be monitored and part about it, they will be areas that you don't allow parking at all.
Front of hydrants.
Hydrants.
Okay, okay.
No parking zones.
Good. That was not clear earlier. Thank you. Okay, so that was one of the questions about those. And then under number five, with visitor parking, it's, um, says that all households will be entitled to two visitor placards which will allow non-resident parking in residential areas. Now, the, um, under the temporary placards, the non-residents also get singing beach parking under 1B. Is this the same? So will, if I have visitors come to my house and they get the non-resident placard?
No, that's a different, a non...
That's a different non-resident placard.
Yeah, that's just for your, our new family that want to come over for dinner, you know, where there's no place to park except if they live in a residential area.
Well, I just, so we already have two different type of non-resident placards. Okay, so if we already do, then are those different colors? How does that? This is where I'm getting a little confused about the differentiation in a non-resident placard parking on the street, non-resident placard parking at singing beach. It's just a little unclear to me.
For some reason, it makes perfect sense to me.
No, no, I'm, no, I get it, Diane. I am.
No, they, they're very, they're very, yeah.
We have to be so clear.
It would be great if we could limit and just have less things, but there's so many exceptions when you have less things. It's, it's more complicated.
Right.
So another way of saying it though is the more streets that are designated for residential parking only, the more you need these types of exceptions to handle allowing your family and friends to come over for dinner.
Well, that, hence, if we have a non-resident placard, it's non-resident parking only, not including beaches.
So what might be helpful though is to explain that, you know, some of these items, I know I've gotten a temporary placard myself because I had to rent a car for a couple of weeks. You, you have dates on them, effective dates, right? Allowed from this period to this period. Things like the visitor parking, no dates on that. I just give them out to my family members when they come for dinner and they put it on the car and they give it back to me before I leave. So I think some of these things have dates, others don't. I don't know if it would be helpful to have that information in this document. So it makes it clear for folks. So I do think it's easy to be confused.
So why, how, what is the difference then with this visitor placard that enables it to be distinguished if I...
So right now, the way I see the difference, right now, the way I see the difference is, to your point, the non-resident temporary placard allows someone to use the beach. The visitor parking placard does not. So if we wind up changing what we do for the temporary non-resident placard, we might want to just make sure that we're not duplicating something that already exists with the visitor placard.
In essence, the, uh, the non-resident placard comes with an agreement to rent a house or, uh, okay, basically, here are the keys, here's your parking placard.
Well, they're both non-resident parking.
But visiting, whether it's like Thanksgiving, you're coming over, here's a placard so you can park there.
Let me try and clarify because I used to visitor parking placards a lot.
I understand what you're saying. But what, I, I, I'm just saying that if we have placards that are given out, that can be easily duplicated if someone does that because there's no expiration date.
Well, so here's the, the thing though, the visitor placard, and this is why it may help to have some of this information in the document. The visitor, when I, my visitor parking placards have my address on it. So they are assigned to me. And I give them to my relatives and they know, they darn well better give them back to me before they drive away. They're not going to get them again. The non-resident must have some sort of address or connotation. So if an unfamiliar car is in a resident area, either through one of these placards, the police know how to trace the car back to...
And that is the case, Diane?
Yes.
Okay.
Would it make sense for the visitor placard to have a street on it so that if, if the intention is for it to be used for visitors to someone in a, on a residential street?
She said that it does have that.
It did, and we changed it. We changed slightly how the visitor parking was used at the last town meeting. But it has always had an address and it previously said, Kathy, you live at Pine Street, this can only be used on Pine Street.
Okay.
But we changed that the last town meeting.
So you can park anywhere in any residential, not the beach, but any residential.
And this is, okay.
Okay.
I don't know if that was an intentional change or not, but it was a change.
It was intentional.
It makes sense.
Union Street. There were a few streets that are residential but don't have any parking at all. So they had, they had visitor parking, but they couldn't use it on their street.
Right.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
This is where now we have, so that was, then the rest of what I have, have, it falls under the, um, resident-only street parking. Haven't gotten there yet. No, so that's it on those.
Not easy, Diane.
No, um, no, 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 I'm sorry, Diane. We are, we are, we have agreed to study overnight parking. We have agreed that voter placards have to be non-reproducible. Not easily reproducible.
Well, we should give a, it, it should have, um...
It has a gold seal.
And yeah?
It has the gold seal on it.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and do we have time limits? Can that person who wants to go and park there and go over to the...
I think, I think we've asked the town staff to look at what the practices are.
In other towns, yeah.
And that's on our...
Right, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Is there anything in the town lots that we need to? The next thing I think is the adoption of the resident-only street list. And there are lots of problems with it.
Yeah, yes.
There is one change that we're making to what had been the bylaw, and that's adding Old Essex Road to, to be a resident-only during the season. Because of the problems with that list, I'm going to suggest that we put this one off. We accept the list as it is, problems and all, and come back and adjust, um, the list since we can do that at any meeting.
Before May one?
Before May one. Because water laws doesn't exist anymore in either, and, and...
Public rent?
Yeah, so...
Hypocrites then.
Yeah.
I, I, I would like, if you would, Chafe, to go over the list and make sure that it's a list you can live with.
Yep.
And it makes sense because, I mean, sometimes it's none, sometimes there's nothing. So if, if you could come back, I guess I should ask this through Greg.
That's fine.
At your earliest convenience. But I suggest that we approve this list now, just so that we have a start.
I'm okay. Can I just ask for a clarification on how it's documented? There was just a question I had where the new list that's in a table format, it has locations listed, but nothing in the other two columns, and I just wasn't sure what that meant.
I don't know either, and that's one of the reasons I hope that we can not try and fix all these problems.
I see. Okay, so that's, okay. I guess my question then would be, Greg, how quickly can we come back with a correct list? That would be nice. I, I think it's important because I think we set an expectation at the town meeting that we would have had it done long before now, so if we could have it corrected by now.
I thought we, we, I don't, I don't remember that. I thought we said we would do that in the, at the next time, which is now.
Do that before May.
Okay.
But, um, fine. In that case, why don't we just postpone this? Not, I think there's no reason to adopt this between now and the next year. Okay. Doctor Bullock.
Thanks.
Might add that to the action.
That, yes.
That goes to the better.
I was so moved up.
Okay. And that is something that is specific to town meetings, town elections. It is possible for people to check in by showing their driver's license. The state has, discourages the use, uh, require, any, anything that implies a requirement to do that. Because I chose it very much.
Yep.
It's been suggested that we could use that at the election where there isn't an immediate, it isn't a couple of hundred, several hundred people showing up at one minute to see how it works. And I ask that this be put on, on our agenda because, although it may seem like a mechanical part of running a town meeting, it is one of the places where every voter shows up, almost every voter show. Many voters show up and interface with what they see as town government. And I would like that to be as friendly as possible. And does anyone have an objection to allowing that as, um, an experiment at the election on March fifth?
I think that's a really good idea because...
It's not required, just...
It's not, it's not required. And, and my, my concern, among my concerns, is that some of the more antagonistic people in town are going to say...
Having done this more times than I care to admit, when introducing a new technology like this, a helpful way of doing it is asking for people's help. We want to make the, um, future check-ins at town meeting as efficient as possible. We have this idea. Could you help us test it out? That could be one way. Because what we're really talking about doing is like a parallel test, sort of. And if you ask for people's help, not only might you get more people to participate, because lots of people in this town like to be helpful, you make it clear it's optional, but we just want to test something out. And if you use the word help, sometimes it goes over a little bit.
I think that's a good idea.
So I, I've just got a question, a new option. Is this something that came, that became an option through the state or something, or how was this an option?
It has always been available.
Oh, it has? Use, use...
They use pulpeds in many states. Other states require identification, so that's why it's there.
Okay.
We, I myself have never used it because I don't ever want to imply that we're asking for identification and I never wanted to hit that line. I was asked at one point to try to make it faster. So that's what pulpeds are supposed to do as opposed to the paper, the books. So it does that. But the scanner, it took me a little while to believe it, but it does bring up the names faster and it does make check-in faster. So it's just an option. You can ask people if they're coming in. There could be a small sign. If you want to try your license, you can try the new scanner. The election officers love it. Ooh, let me try.
Is there, is there, do we, do we have to buy these scanners? There are costs here?
No, they're, they're, they're on the pulpeds. They've always been there. All the same stuff. It's just something we never utilize anymore.
Alan, how do you, what is, do you have an opinion on this?
I, I think it's worth trying at an election. I would be very cautious about adopting it for town meetings. Because there you have many people showing up at one time. And as we saw in November of twenty-twenty-two, it can be a nightmare. We have a hundred and fifty people standing in line in the hold after we were supposed to be in.
And you don't think it would help?
I, I don't, I, I, until people get used to it, it's not going to help. Because they won't have their, even have the license with them. They're gonna have to fumble around in their purses and wallets to find it. It's not gonna, initially, it's not gonna help at town meetings.
Well, it wouldn't ever be required. Again, it wouldn't ever be required. So even if they inhabit right available, they could just, you could do the name. So it would never be the only thing.
So if I may, when trying these types of technical experiments, one of the most important things you can do is be clear on what you want to learn. So what do you want to learn? How long does it take someone to fumble with their ID if it's clearly, you know? So just think about, you know, some of the things that Alan is talking about. What do you want to learn? And make sure that you set up this optional area so you can learn what you need to... so you can learn what you need to, to make decisions about whether or not to implement it in other scenarios.
Would you have like, say, one line that is for this, and then the others are just going to be traditional, or what we've done in the past? Or is it going to be available at all check-in points? Have to think about that.
Or ask if there are other towns or cities which use this as an optional approach.
They do.
Then what do they do? How long does it take? Because, you know, every question that we're going to ask, if someone's already using it, it's already been asked and answered, and we could.
John's, John's just, he has a speed pass line.
Yeah, it's like a.
It's a speed pass, right? That's exactly what it is.
They know you're going in here.
Or at least we're assuming it will be, yes.
Find out.
Well, and that's the purpose of the test.
We would have an extra check-in that is just for licenses? So that we would have the normal.
Not at the election.
Not at the election.
No, can't do that at an election. That would be, that would be too many people. I have to have two check-in stations. So I wouldn't want to make one one and one the other.
Or you could have three.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
I can't at the election, because one is for the early voting, absentee voting, and the other one is for the wardens. So at this point, we have four. We have ordered more. They won't be here for the election, but.
So this is your, this would actually be for town meeting?
We would offer it at the election, but not just a speed lane. We would just offer it at the election.
Okay.
Let people kind of get used to it, let them try it if they want it, and see what happens. When it gets time to, back to the town meeting, then we will talk, you know, how did it go? What did people think? We could even question people, get some ideas, you know.
I just, I want to say very clearly that I will reserve the decision at town meeting for myself.
Yep, before town meeting. You'll tell me before town meeting.
Oh, yeah, I know what I mean. When it comes to doing this at a town meeting.
Yes, so we'll do some, we'll.
So if you're not going to have a segregated lane, though, all the more important, it's all the more important to figure out what you want to learn. Because normally, to, you know, John's analogy, the speed pass model is what you would be shooting for at a town meeting. So if, just think about what it is you want to learn. Is it timing? Is it receptiveness? Because that's, it's going to be different if you're not able to really model the behavior you might want to use at a proposed town meeting.
That's a really good point, and I will give some thoughts on what metrics I think we should use to make the, potentially make the transfer to town meeting.
Yeah, because ideally, what you would want to do is model exactly what you want to do, and then transfer it to another type of election or town meeting. But if you're not going to model it the same way during the test, that's a little bit, you have to be more thoughtful about what you want to learn.
I welcome some thoughts as to how we could do that. It's not going to, it's not going to transfer easily from an election that lasts for several hours to a check-in for a town meeting.
It might just be human perception. I don't know how long the lines get at a particular hour at town meeting. I mean, excuse me, at an election, you know, people might straggle in during the day. It might not be as big an issue. So you might just be gauging things like human feelings about it.
People who say, "I don't have to prove who I am."
Yeah, exactly. How many of those do you get?
And how many of those do you hesitate to slow down?
Right, you might not be able to get any more metrics than that, but that still is possibly useful information.
So we have something else to put on our, the meeting, the second meeting in March. Because that was, Mr. Starkey.
I have one very simple question.
Name and address.
I didn't ask Alan LeFer's name and address. So that was Alan Wilson, five by one.
Jim Starkey, 13 Tux Point Road.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll talk to you later. One very simple question. What problem is this supposed to solve?
This is supposed to give us a faster way for people to check in to elections and possibly meetings. Just make it easier.
You don't know.
We don't know. We are running an experiment at the, at the primary election to see what the reactions. And if the reaction is not that it's more efficient, then we've answered our question. Does that answer your question? Okay, have we beaten that one to that?
Yep.
Okay. The, I think. Yes. Now it's the report on the voting system.
If I could just briefly introduce this. I think I should explain briefly why I thought it was important to appoint a committee. The reason is that when we've had problems with the Turning Technologies voting system in the past, the answers we've gotten, the explanations we've gotten from Turning Technologies have been either inaccurate in some cases or incomplete. And I wanted to be sure that we had independent experts looking at it on our behalf, so that we could be reasonably confident that such problems wouldn't happen again, and so that we could assure the voters that we had a system that was working and counting their votes accurately. And so I appointed this committee, and we are really fortunate to have had the kind of expertise that we have. And I just want to thank the members of the committee, Jim Starkey, Lee Spence, Kurt Meldon, Moffett, Tiffany Marletta, and Pat Harrison, for committing a significant amount of time to figure this out. I'll turn it over to Jim to make the report.
Okay, Jim Starkey, still at 13 Tux Point Road. I'm going to just take, do this very quickly. And first, explain what happened, and secondly, what we're doing so it won't happen again. Normally, this is the receiver we use for town meeting. This is normally set up on a, in the middle of the gymnasium, on top of a tripod or a stand or something. It's about six, eight feet in the air. And it's connected by a Cat 5 cable to the voting computer. When it was set up, and it's set to channel 72, which we use for all of the clickers. When we set up, when it was set up for town meeting, a special town meeting, it was noticed that the system wasn't working, that there wasn't any response to test clickers. And as part of the troubleshooting process, somebody plugged a second dongle, which is much plain the same as this, but much lower power, into the voting computer, and it was discovered that the voting computer was working just fine with that. So this isolated the problem with something with this or its cabling. So they replaced the cable to this thing, and the light on this came on, suggesting it was now online. And the system was tested, and it continued to work. And we thought everything was good to go. It wasn't. There is behavior that is not documented, and I think is unknown to Turning Technology's support department, is that if you have one receiver plugged in, and you plug a second receiver in that's set to the same channel, the second receiver will be changed to a different channel automatically. Doesn't tell you anything about it. It just does it. So what happened when the cable was replaced and this became active, it set the channel for this to something like 45. So all of the voting, in fact, was being done on this little guy, which has half the power and a tiny antennas compared to this. And this was why we had very bad reception in the back of the room, but in the front, there was no problem at all. We did a lot of experimentation. In the process, we discovered this automatic behavior. And, you know, this was an eureka moment. We know what happened. We went and experimented with the equipment, the gymnasium, set it up the way it is set for town meeting, with this thing mounted up. And we were able to reproduce behavior with this, with bad reception at the back of the hall and just fine at the front. When we set up with this one correctly, set to channel 72, like it should, everything worked just fine. Now, we weren't able to reproduce the effect of having 450 people there absorbing radio wave energy. And somebody suggested we borrow the entire memorial school student population, but they're not very big. So we didn't do that. So we have a very, very high confidence that we know exactly what went wrong. There's nobody to blame. Nobody did anything wrong. We just didn't understand how the system worked. The second is, what are we going to do to avoid this problem in the future? And that is, there is, in the turning application, a way that you can put it into a test mode. When, between votes, when there's nothing projected on the screen from the voting computer, we will have designated people, probably appointed tellers, in the four corners of the room, and they will just hit a button and see if they get a response. And as long as they're in the, you know, extreme four corners, we can be very, very confident the system is working exactly as intended. If it's not working as intended, you'll give Alan a nudge, and he'll have to make a hard decision. But he can deal with that on town meeting floor.
I've done it before.
Yes, yes. The committee has very high confidence that we know what went wrong. And we also have very high confidence that the system will work as advertised. And complete confidence, if it doesn't work as advertised, we'll be able to detect that without having to embarrass ourselves in what I'll be. So at that point, I would like to, are there any questions?
I just have one curiosity question. So whenever you plug in the second receiver, the second receiver says, "I'm shipped into another channel." Now, did that go, whether you?
We did this time, because we were, the first one was, this one wasn't functional. We plugged in this one to test the system. That pointed connection to that.
Right.
And we didn't know, if we knew what the behavior was, we would unplug this one and reset this back to channel 72, and it worked just fine.
I'm wondering if you tried it the other way around. In other words, it was just the little one that was working at the town meeting?
This is the little one. This is what we were using at town meeting.
Right, and that was the first one that was plugged in?
Technically, this one was plugged in, but the cable was bad, so it wasn't.
Oh, all right.
So the computer did not recognize it, and that's why its little green light wasn't on. So this one got set to channel 45. This stayed on 72.
So going forward, just one receiver.
Okay.
I do have a comment, just to say.
On that note, I'm out of this business now.
Before you go, thank you very, very much for all the work. That's what everybody.
I don't think it was straightforward. It took a little bit of sleuthing to figure this all out. Really did.
It did. And it took people who are a lot smarter than I am to do it.
Just a different type of.
She go.
She's decided that her part of the meeting is.
Okay, well, in that case, I'm going to officially turn this over to you.
Thank you, sir.
Everything works.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you for.
Yes.
Figuring it out.
I am very glad we, at least are confident that we have this fixed, because many, many voters have told me that they really like being able to vote privately.
Yes.
And God forbid, if we haven't got this solved, I think we should continue to use electronic voting system, an electronic voting system, but a different. Hopefully, that's not the case, because we bought this one.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
A lot of dollars for shipping.
Is there anything else on that?
Thank you.
I'm going to.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The appointment policy. The second reading of the 42th version. Are there any questions?
I haven't gone over it enough.
Would you like a motion?
Yes.
I move that the board adopt the amended appointment policy.
Second.
Further discussion. Becky?
Yes, thank you, Ann.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy? John says yes.
John says yes.
Good, and we will let those people who are affected by this know shortly.
Yes.
So you had sent out a list at one point. Could you resend that? Yep, I think it fell on my email, and I did not.
I think the, there are some changes.
Oh, okay.
In the, so yes, please send a, send the list to us before you send it.
Oh, yeah.
Send stuff.
Yep.
Now, it's if there are vacancies in the committee.
Yeah.
Okay, liaison updates. John?
Just one thing with regard to, I guess, the seniors. Council on Aging, Friends of the Council on Aging, Goldenagers. There is a talk that, or a luncheon they have in March, and they want Greg or someone from the board here to talk about the Senior Center and Progress. We will, we will, we will be at that luncheon.
What day is that, John?
March 9. And.
And where? Is this the usual behind?
The Masons, in fact, at the.
The Masons, not the, behind the church?
No, it's at the Masons. That's, the church is the Monday copy, and they also have a Friends of, Friends of the Council on Aging lunch. That's a separate lunch.
Okay.
So, and I don't have anything on VPW right now, and Conservation Commission is meeting as we are meeting. So that's, that's it for me.
The downtown improvement committee's meeting tomorrow morning. They are, they're going to be discussing the DIP2GODO vision and how we might break it up into smaller projects and begin executing. So, you know, I know the chair has already talked to Chuck, but we're going to discuss it as a committee tomorrow, and then possibly engage Susan Beckman to try and make sure we're using the new process, because the first part would be to come forward with clear proposals on scope for what they want to do, how many different projects there are. And this is all for, not fiscal year '25, but fiscal year '26. So they're doing advanced planning at this point. And Bike and Ped will meet next week.
Season's coming. April 1st, so six weeks, it all happened together.
The wayfinding, next wayfinding meeting is on March 5. And that will be on Zoom, so it will get posted on the town website in the evening. Board of Health is Thursday morning. They did have a meeting, and I'll go to that at the next one. Our next liaison updates.
The, oh, the school committee decided they had very good news on the health insurance. They were carrying it at over 14%, and it came in at somewhere over 8%. And they applied all of that to reducing the cost to the towns, which meant that they could take the middle rather than the lowest of their three budgets and still keep coming to over 3%. And we will set the proportionate formula, still keeps Essex at about 4%. And is that right?
4.8.
4.8, okay.
What were they, 5.5?
Yeah, just under 5.5.
My goodness, okay.
So their percent increase is, is high, and I guess they are, they have set it. They may be able to handle it without a number of that, but I don't know. The MBTA CAS course is being greatly aided by Mark Resnick. He's, probably would have been a town planner, but.
You can call him town planner, that's fine.
He's adding organization and, and focus and getting along. Time table, which is kind of scary because sometimes between now and first April, the task force has to decide first whether we're coming up with one proposal or several, and what those proposals will be.
Not really one term anymore.
And, uh.
Excuse me, and do those proposals go to the state and then come, get publicized here or the other way around?
The proposals, the proposals, the task force is to make a recommendation to the planning board and the select board. So first it goes to us, to the, probably the planning board first, then the select board. And assuming that we can come up with an agreement on a proposal that is believed to meet the state's requirements, then it goes in, I forgot when it's July or August, to the state.
Yeah, he was saying earlier.
Earlier?
So send that closer, towards the end of May.
Towards the end of May.
So that it's back.
So that it's.
By end of August.
Back to the.
Because they have up to 90 days.
90 days, and they'll take it all.
So we.
It's hard to say, it's a good question, how long they'll actually take.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they've got 150.
You still look at it.
Then, the task force will hopefully continue, I hope with the assistance of, of the planning board, to explain what's been proposed to the, to the others. And we will have a special town meeting sometime in October.
Yeah, sorry, included.
Yes.
The draft timeline as part of my memo, as part of my updates in the memo.
I read it yesterday and then.
No, no, that's fine, I just, so, obviously subject to change, but it does outline sort of the marching orders, starting, starting in early April. So another six weeks or so of the committee to sort of finalize their, their foundations.
The area that's being most closely considered starts at Elmer Street and kind of follows Underhouse Hill Reservation, staying back from the most historic areas and including times of, quite a lot lower Pine Street.
Question, includes like the gas station or?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I thought. So that, that part of Pine Street only has very few multifamily right now, the side I live on has many more. All right.
So, there may be, we're also looking at something that starts on at Bisham Union, comes down to Summer and heads up Summer, and then there's, the question is how to get that to be five acres, and it's not, it's not clear that there is five acres there. And the awkward thing is that the lot that Crosby sits on is actually two lots. So the part of Summer Street on the, on the right-hand side as you're heading up, out of town, it would be nice to include the shops there, and it's not terribly well utilized, but that includes half of Crosby's. And the, the state's regulations on mixed use are, have changed, but it's still, the area doesn't count and it's, it's problematic and we really don't want to screw up.
When did they, do you know of when they changed the, the mixed use?
They originally had no provision for mixed use, and I think in November-ish, there was a change shortly before the, our consultant who's standing over there, shortly before she joined us, they decided that it would be possible to have, to count the units of the mixed use, but not the area. So if.
So it's the acreage doesn't count against the five acres, but the units count against the density.
Yeah. So that provision, just, it's, seemed better, seems better not to do anything at risk. It's by a much stronger preference for turning all gas stations into multi. We have the consent agenda.
I have a couple of things that.
Okay, what would you like to remove from the consent agenda?
Rather than remove, I just have a very quick amendment, but normally I just send them, but I didn't today. And on January 16th meetings, under interviews, interview fees, it's Sandy Rogers, it says at Rogers later, but just, that's all, it's nothing. But it's her name. Do you want us to add anything?
Or do you have to?
Oh, do I have, then the other was under the common vixeler's license, the question for, under the Braga Donuts. It's, it's said that they, they were, hadn't renewed the license in '23, so were they behind two years?
No, they got it in '23.
Okay, that's, I just saw a date.
Sorry.
That's all, all right, all set.
Some of the donuts is likely.
Would you like a motion?
Yes.
I move that the select board approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Further discussion. Becky.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
Kathy, yes. And I say yes.
John says yes.
Okay. Liaison for this report.
Yeah, it can be brief, you covered the MBTA zoning, so I don't need to repeat that. You also covered the school budget, so we're okay on that one as well. You know, we do need to think about, still long-term, we're not solving the problem. We may have kicked the can one more year, but it's still kicking the can.
Getting to be a dented can.
It's a very dented can. So we do encourage us to keep thinking of ways to see how we might address the more systemic issues that we have here. HAC appeal, so the, the 40B before the Housing Appeals Committee, it'll, the day one will be here in Manchester on Monday, on March 4, starting at 10, I believe it's 10:00 a.m., and it'll be at the Legion. So that is a, people are, it's a public meeting, people can attend, people will not be able to make comments. It'll only be basically the lawyers and any prefiled witnesses that the lawyers have identified. So it starts here on March 4, and then it'll continue on in Boston, and that'll be, people can attend virtually to observe again. And it could take five to eight days, depending on how quickly things move along. So it's certainly all the week of the 4th, and then if necessary, going into the week of the month as well. So, our council has been very busy, working with a handful of expert witnesses and providing their testimony and their rebuttal testimony to comments that the applicant has made against our witnesses. So the hearing itself is simply cross-examination of the experts. So it's not presentation of the prefiled testimony, it is simply cross-examining the experts. And so the lawyers again will handle that on both sides, asking them their questions. So that'll, that'll get underway in a couple of weeks. And after it's, after the hearing is over, it's a, it's a hurry up and wait situation, where we will wait probably at least a year, if not longer, for a decision. So there's not much we can do during that period, the lawyers will have some final filings to do after the hearing, but it really is a wait, waiting game until the final decision that is issued. And that'll, that'll take a good amount of time. So that's where, that's where that all stands. And then the last thing, we had talked about, or Ann had mentioned the possibility of a nice celebration, one of our longstanding residents who will be leaving town, and it would be nice to hold a celebration for her. So I'm welcome, you know, a couple of you may be wanting to, to help out with staff.
I would love to help out with that.
Pull that together. I know, I know Tom Keel has already raised his hand to volunteer, as, as, as in keeping with who Tom Keel is, which is great, which is great. So, yeah, a couple of you want to help out, I mean, I can work with you and think of how best to pull that all together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm definitely interested in that.
I would like to.
Right.
Yeah, great, no, it'll be, it'll be fun.
Yep.
Said last, but, last last is, I'll be away Thursday, then into next week, back on Wednesday, but then back out doing some childcare after that. So, little, little in and out over the next week and a half.
I have a question before we, the, the, the citizens petition.
Yes.
I'm just, it, it shows eight signatures, are there?
There are ten.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that they had them.
Yeah, there were multiple pages.
Okay, good, I just.
Yes. We just, we just gave you the one page.
Okay. And we know what this.
I, I was going to ask about that too, I just wasn't clear. What problem were we trying to solve?
Do not accessory sign.
Basically, it's targeted towards banner advertising at the football field, at Highland Field, at the school. So, go ahead.
The, the town has a bylaw regulating signs. It's differentially enforced slightly, but it, the Donna first in particular and several others want to raise money for the athletics at the school by selling signs to be hung on the, on the fences around Highland Field. We currently allow the Little League to do that, Little League, no.
Yes.
Little League to do that at, at swinging, and that's never been a problem, because nobody sees swing. But I figured, when asked, that, that probably somebody would complain if there were, a sign went up on Highland Field and somebody realized that this was not within the limits. So Donna has put together with Alan's help and, and the help of our, the real estate specialists, zoning specialists in our document page, something that would allow the school to control signs on school property and the town to control signs on town property.
Okay, the snippet that was in the petition, really, I would not have understood that.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree.
I think I need to go back and read the whole sign policy, because that snippet that was in, it just.
I, I have.
You did a great explanation.
I have a very long email that I, I will send to Debbie, which I, is how I introduced it to the school and, and to, to Donna.
Okay.
With all of its, some of it's in the zoning ordinances and some of it is, is in standalone bylaw.
Okay.
And I will, I will bring that up in a few minutes.
So the, the school will.
Yeah, so that carves out the school, so then the school is in charge of what they want to do, when, where, how, why?
Yep, yep.
Okay, so it's just carving out that.
And for town properties. It cars out town and school properties as, as an exception to the general rule of off-premise sign being prohibited.
And who does the other side?
Town as well?
Town as well.
Yeah.
As off-premise signs.
Right.
Generally are prohibited, but this would be an exception to that rule.
You say off-premise?
Meaning the sign, you can put up a sign saying that you're Mari's, right? You can't put up a sign on Mari's saying, Ira Toyota says.
Right.
Shop at Mari's.
Okay, but it, basically, it was such a small snippet, it looked like it may be applicable to private residences or something, I just.
That's what I was, what I was.
Fox and Recman doing this for a long time.
Right, so they're.
Festival, music in the park. That banner.
Special banners, short-term are.
Elsewhere in the policy.
So a banner is, is different than an advertisement for a business.
I see a lot of advertising with that.
You're advertising a concert, I get it, but.
No, but there's, there's sponsorships, you know, and that's, you know, I don't have a problem with it.
But that's for that event.
There are definitely gray areas here.
Part of the downtown culture.
Right.
There are gray areas.
No question.
So the banners at, at Ridgedale, that's actually no advertising, but those banners don't fall under that same.
It's, um.
It's a gray area.
So it's a little unclear, but.
Sandy areas, I want to go to gray areas.
A lot of revenue we could lose.
I, the, the question came up for me some years ago when the MBTA put up signs at the train station, and it was mentioned that those were, did not follow the requirements of Arizona ordinance, but it turns out the state has a special exception.
They have an exception.
And it is always special.
We are creatures of this state. The state has the final say.
Are there any other issues, questions?
Would you like a motion to adjourn?
That would be wonderful.
I motion, make a motion to adjourn.
You'll get a second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Hi.
Don't leave, Jeff's got something to sign, sure.
I already signed it.
So is this?
I know you didn't.